Hi, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting, January 18th, 2023. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended through March 31st, 2023. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Could we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Meg, I'll turn it over to you.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools without regard of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on. Any special recognitions?
Not this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, I am seeking approval for the minutes of January 4th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 4th, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I do see Bella here tonight, so we have a student representatives' report. Take it away.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've been here. I got sick. So, we are at the halfway point of the school year. Academics are going smoothly, but the work is ramping up slightly, especially in our AP classes. We're working to stay consistent and up to date with our assignments. In terms of extracurriculars, there are a bunch. The class of 2024 is holding a semi-formal winter ball on February 4th to raise money for our class. There's a Quebec trip next week, which about 50 students, mostly French students, will be going on. Auditions are completed, and the cast has been selected for the Spring Musical Beauty and the Beast. And on a similar note, four Auburn students participated in the CDMEA District Select Choir Honor Music Festival. Their names are Clay Kukasi, Neil Grossvenner, Arlo Johnson, and Hayden Plum.
Good stuff happening over there.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that report. Do we have any questions or comments? I'm seeing none. All right, you're...
I have one.
Oh, sorry, Brooke, go ahead.
She might not even know the answer. You don't know the dates of the Beauty and the Beast show yet?
I don't yet, but they're typically...
Okay, all right, I'll keep a lookout.
We've got some time.
Okay. March 8th. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. You're welcome to leave if you want. It's up to you. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as we do at each meeting, we're going to begin tonight with a spotlight on students. This evening, we have two students from Auburn High School who have participated in the Model UN under the guidance and direction of Mr. Bonaccio. And so, we're going to hear tonight a little bit about their experience and what that encompasses to be part of Model UN. And they'll come up and introduce themselves, too.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Haley Swenson. Thank you for having us here. So, Model UN is a club, or a delegation, which I would call it, where students can participate in a simulation of the United Nation General Assembly. So, we typically go to conferences where delegates can discuss topics such as gender equality, climate change, global health, and so much more. So, I originally, my freshman year, joined for the love of discussing global issues with others, but then quickly realized that there are so many more reasons why a student should join Model UN. The skills I have gained from the club are so beneficial and so just life-changing. I learned how to work with people that I've never, like, known how to work with before, even if they have different opinions. Also, my public speaking and academic skills increased greatly. This past November, delegates spent a weekend at Brown University. We worked with students from not just all over the world, but the country. We worked on solving issues and discussing topics. This is a great opportunity to work competitively with other students who are also passionate about Model UN. Thank you again for having us here to represent Model UN.
Thank you. Wow. Great. Thank you very much. Are you coming up, too? Do we have another person?
I heard two people, so...
Yes, hi. I'm Allison Lefaria. I'm actually the new co-adviser with Mr. Bonaccio. I'm one of the new teachers. I actually met you all very briefly at that, one of the very early ones of the year with all the chaos. And so, this has been my first year co-advising Model UN. It's a new introduction to me. And I got the great experience to go to Brown with everybody and kind of see the kids get that experience to work with kids from wildly different backgrounds and areas and different parts of the country. There were schools there from Chicago and stuff like that. And it was great to see them working and problem-solving all of these real-life issues on this kind of micro scale where they can work and problem-solve. And it was just, it was a great experience to be there and see it all happen live.
That's awesome.
Have a great time.
Oh, it's great. Haley, I'm so impressed with your presentation skills, and you're so confident. And you take after your mom, obviously. No, it's great to see. I'm very excited for you guys. Anything from the board? Any comments?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
I don't know. I think I've said it before. I'm a huge supporter of Model UN. I think you guys are amazing. And I love it. I've been pushing my daughter to do it. I know you tried. I know you tried. She cannot get out of her own way. She's super shy, but that girl can debate.
Her mother.
All the time. She has a mom. Yes. I just think what you guys do is wonderful, so congratulations. You guys do a great job.
And through the chair, fun fact, I was also in Model UN. So, in ninth grade, yeah. It was a great experience. And we, I think, back then, there was one in New York City, so we did it there. But it was such a great experience, and it really does help with your public speaking and your eye contact and the confidence to get up in front of large groups of people, even scary school committee members. So, congrats.
That's a good question.
Yeah, of course.
Haley, could you just share, was there a particular topic that you were involved in this last time? Or one that's particularly interesting to you? You're gonna have to go up to the mic, though. Sorry.
Specifically at Brown?
Maybe any of the experiences, one that struck you that was most interesting or the one that you learned the most from?
Okay. So, I think the first topic I ever did as a Model UN delegate was I did the rediscovering and, like, rebuilding of Haiti. I think that was probably one of the best conferences and best experiences I had and one of the best committees, just because I think that I was really so intent with it. And it was just such a good thing to learn about other countries and other places in the world that are really struggling and getting involved with the rebuilding of that and being able to put my sense into what I think should happen and being able to discuss with other people what they think should happen as well.
Wow, that's amazing.
Do they come to a res- do you come to some resolution in all of this, or is it...
Yeah. So, at the end of every conference, we have sponsors who get together and write papers. In these papers, we have clauses and amendments on kind of how to solve the big issue that we first came into this conference to discuss. I think that that's probably what makes it kind of the problem fixed, or at least what we think how could fix it.
Brooke, you need her to talk to your daughter, because I'm already sold. Like, I want to join it.
What was the, what was the current issue that was going on at Brown?
So, I did economics, and I think it was something with, just like, worldwide issues with global warming. So, I worked with, closely with people from Chicago and another student from New York. And we created resolutions to fix what was happening in our countries. Again, such a great opportunity to work with people from all over the world and seeing what they've learned from Model UN, the experiences they got to have, and then them sharing with me tricks that they learned, how to better their conference abilities. And it was just really awesome and definitely a great opportunity.
Great. Wow, that's great.
That's great.
Awesome. Yeah. And thank you to the staff members, too, that committed your time. That is a huge sacrifice, and obviously it's paying off, so thank you for all you guys do as well. All right, Haley, that was impressive. I'm...
Good job.
Yeah, great job.
You speak great.
Yeah, you do.
Very nice.
Very, very nice.
Yeah. All right.
And you are free to, free to go. You don't have to stay for the rest of the evening.
I would recommend leaving.
Exciting stuff, but thank you very much for coming.
Good job, Mom and Dad.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye.
I was her student.
HJ B, that was a great grade. I thought the name sounded familiar.
That was the celebrity.
Yes.
Twenty-one years, that's a lot of people. Oh, that's funny. That was great. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this evening, I'm sharing with you an media update on the performance goals that I established at the beginning of the year. And this is just information to keep you informed of my progress, also to hear any feedback you may have. So, you'll see that on the first page of what was in your packet, that's the goal description. Excuse me. If you turn to the second page, highlighted in yellow is the update for that student learning goal. And I won't go through each of these, but you'll see that the focus in that has been to meet with principals regularly along with other leadership staff. We've been focusing on making sure that the initiative around universal design for learning is moving forward. Working with Mr. Keller, there's been an MCAS analysis that's happening with the leadership team, as well as principals, as well as teachers. That continues. I meet with the principals every other week individually. We make classroom visits. Part of the reason for the classroom visit was to help calibrate our feedback to teachers. So, while we're going into a teacher's classroom, it really is more of a discussion of what are you, as a principal, gonna give for feedback to this teacher? And then, I have my say on what I might say to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page as we try and move people forward. That's been a really, really interesting process, and I also provide them with written feedback after those meetings. And again, we're just looking at data, always keeping students in the forefront, so trying to move that forward. So, some decent progress in that area. My professional practice goal had to do with the new superintendent induction program. I have attended all the meetings. I meet regularly with my coach, who you met earlier in the year, Terry Thompson. Later this spring, they will be conducting a leadership team rubric 360 review where they send out a survey to everyone who is a direct report to me with some questions about my leadership and that kind of thing. So, there'll be more information coming on that once that's complete. So, that'll kind of be a nice rounding out of that. And I'm also happy with the connections I made to other superintendents in the area, both new and experienced. Those are always good connections to have, so that's been a great asset to all of that. My next, the district improvement goal one had to do with safety, the district and school safety teams. So, we are regularly meeting with the district safety teams. School-based safety teams are now really more robust and very active. There are unannounced visits to buildings in process. We're looking for prop doors and things of that nature. So far, so good. We have a clean report. I checked in with them today, so that's a good thing. Online training is being rolled out for those that can do that. And we're revising, we're already looking at a revision of the training that we can do at the beginning of the year so that everybody is up to speed at the start of the year, how we can make that happen, when it can happen. So, a lot of work around safety, and that's ongoing. Mr. Fahy really takes the lead on the district safety team, along with the police and fire. And they've done a nice job sharing out with the school-based safety teams anything they might need to know. And very soon, we will be conducting those modified ALICE active shooter drills with students at the middle school and high school. But again, very much modified, no shooting. It's more of a discussion about what would happen if, and the police department helps us with that as well.
Okay.
The second district improvement goal had, was related to the strategic plan update and process. So, I am very hopeful that our next meeting, I will have a final draft of the strategic plan that will come before you for approval. I will also have an update on my entry plan, which was shared with you earlier in the school year. I've done all my listening sessions with students, staff, and families. I will tell you that we should be very proud of the thoughtful students we have in our buildings. I didn't conduct them at Bryn Mawr and Pakechog, but I did at Swiss and the middle school and the high school. They love Auburn. They love our schools. And they know we can do better in some areas, you know? So, it was really just great discussion. And again, we now have diversity, equity, inclusion as a standing agenda on our principal meeting agendas. And again, more of that to be shared the next time, so, but we're making progress. And finally, the last district improvement goal was related to work with the Anti-Defamation League on cultural competence and microaggressions. A lot of this is facilitated by Mr. Keller, where staff completed two half-day training sessions already. Issues related to bias are discussed regularly at principal meetings. Safe schools, a component of DESI, will be doing some training with AMS and AHS staff later in the year around LGBTQ plus youth. And we'll have some more training again in March as well. There'll be another half-day that staff will get. And this has been something that staff have been asking for, as their demographics and the needs of our kids change, we all need to have some training on all of that, so if things are moving along. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What does it mean by "microaggressions"? So, when you don't outright, you don't, I might not outright call you a slur, but I might use a modification of a slur and say it a little bit quietly or say it with a smile on my face, so it seems like, oh, maybe I'm just joking. But nonetheless, if I'm a student of color and it was something related to that, it makes me feel not safe. And so, those are things that aren't blatant or obvious, but they happen. And quite frankly, I think incidents of bias happen more frequently as a microaggression than they do as something big and blatant and obvious.
Okay.
And sometimes, that's a bit more insidious to kind of weed out, you know? Because I was only joking. It was just a joke. But if it hit my race, my identity, my gender, it's not a joke, no matter what it is. So, yes.
No matter how quietly you say it.
No matter how quietly or with how big of a smile.
Right.
Through the chair, like, as within the middle school, we're seeing it a lot, a lot of microaggression.
Really?
Yeah, it's a lot like, "Oh, I was just kidding. They knew I was joking." "Oh, ha-ha," that's what we say at home, and so, we're seeing it a lot. So, the more teachers know about it, I think the better off we are and just how to, like, talk them through it and understand how to handle the microaggressions.
Oh, okay. And kids, too. Kids, too, right? They need some training on all of that.
Absolutely.
And that, and what's okay and what's not okay. So, that's gonna be a bigger nut to crack than this year, but certainly, we've gotten the ball rolling, which is a positive thing.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I know you did all those listening sessions. Is there gonna be, like, a circle around back with, "I heard what you said. These are the changes that we're making at any of the schools"?
Yeah. So, that's a great point. So, I'm gonna, I'll share with you some of my findings at the next meeting, which was part of my, the entry plan. But as I left, specifically the high school, there's a need to circle back. The issues are more real. The issues are, it's a bigger school, right? So, it's a bit more prevalent as kids explore who they are as young adults. So, that's a definite. But I think even at the middle school in Swanson, to come back to some of that is important. So, yes, that will happen. It's just gonna take its turnaround. But I think we just have to get students more involved overall in kind of the day-to-day and let us know, because I'll tell you, they didn't know me from, many of them, the kids, some knew me, but many didn't know me. And there were very few that were reluctant to speak up and to talk and to kind of open up to what they've experienced and have experienced. And the best part of all of that is, like, several of them are like, you know, "It seems like we're complaining, but we really love our school and we love our teachers. So, don't take this all that we're not happy here, but..." Right? Just like anything, we can always make things better. So, it was great. Honestly, it was, it was, it was great just listening to kids. So, I loved it.
All right, we'll move on to Student Opportunity Act update?
Yes. So, some of you may remember, some not so much. But back on July 8th of 2020, the school committee approved the Student Opportunity Act plan that is in your packet. This reflects the district commitment to programming to impact student learning gaps. This was a requirement through DESI. Again, the plan is in your packet. The way, initially, the way this was rolled out was that this was gonna be a separate funding source to fund some additional ways to close gaps. That never kind of came to be. And the way they couched it was, we would get an increase in our chapter 78. So, we've seen some increase, slight, if I have to say. So, based on this plan, you'll see some amounts in here that we could, we really ended up funding with some of our ESAR money. But nonetheless, I am required to share this with you, as we will be providing, we have to provide DESI with an update in, I think, starting in between February and April, with how we've done on these. Now, this has to do with universal design for learning, bright programming, social-emotional learning. It's all things that we're working on. It's just an interesting way that they said, "Yes. So, go ahead and make this plan. We're gonna give you this money, but wait." "No, we're gonna give it to you in this different way, and it's not gonna be quite as much as you thought to start with." So...
But you still have to report out on it.
Correct. And, and from what I understand, they're gonna be very vigorous in making sure we're in compliance. And we are still working on that. We have time to do it, so we're getting there. But it really all aligns with what we've tried to do all along. We were gonna do it anyhow. Exactly. 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 So, really, just sharing for information, and, you know, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it, but if you have any questions, or if you have questions the next time, I'm certainly happy to answer any of those.
Yeah, I read through it. I have a question, actually, with, it says the FY21 budget item, and then down under number three, under commitment two. So, on the bottom, it says the Teachers for the Bright Programming, $140,000. And then, it says Classroom Teachers. Are those our own teachers?
No, so that, so we ended up funding that through ESAR money.
Okay.
Right? So, those, so that, we had to, when we, when you've made this plan, you had to name your budget item, the amount, and then they gave you set foundation categories. So, you had to say, "How did this budget item, which category does it go into?" So, the Teachers for the Bright Programming were categorized as, we were adding Classroom Teachers.
Oh, okay.
Right? Much like, same thing, if you look at the top of the next page, it says Clinicians for Bright Programming. The only foundation category that they gave us that those fit into were Classroom Teachers. Now, they're not really Classroom Teachers. They're clinicians. But you, there were only set categories that you could select for any of these initiatives.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure more work wasn't being piled on our own staff.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
And again, this funding for those folks came from ESAR, the ESAR money.
I mean, it would be quite the stipend for those teachers, but still, they already have a full plate. I'm worried they wouldn't be able to keep all of it straight, so...
Yeah.
All right, good. I mean, there was a lot of good stuff out of that.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. We've been working on all of those things anyway.
Exactly.
Family counseling and, you know, so...
Yep.
One more question. Under Commitment Three, the monitoring success with outcome metrics and targets. Number one, it says DESI Outcome Metrics, ELA Mean SGP. What does the SGP mean?
The Student Growth Percentage.
Okay.
So, what kind of growth are they showing?
All right.
Through the chair, I just want to say that I'm looking at this Co-teaching Inclusion UDL training for teachers. I've already seen my fourth-grade daughter's teacher, I'll give her a shout-out, Ms. Nickerson, who has already used it. Like, Freya came home and mentioned, like, "Oh, we got to pick, like, three different ways to do this activity." And she...
She's made my day.
Loved it. She was like, "I got to watch a video, because you know I don't like to read." And I'm, but she's like, "But it was so interesting." She starts telling me about it, and I'm like, "You, like, you..." Yeah, I know. So, Ms. Nickerson's doing a great job.
That's awesome.
That's great.
And we have a lot of teachers that are really embracing these practices and principles, so...
It's great. The multiple modalities, especially for kids who have IEPs and have disabilities, who might struggle, but might be better listeners than readers. Like, they're still getting the same information. It's just presented, and it gives the kids choice, and it's really good inclusive practice, so...
I agree. I mean, we give them a choice in how they want to seat themselves, too. Like, they can stand up, or they could sit on a yoga ball, or whatever it is. So, it just makes sense that we would give them the option to, to learn the way that they feel comfortable learning, so...
Yep.
Yeah, that's good. Good stuff. All right. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none. All right, we'll move on to new business.
A new business. So, the 2023-2024 school year calendar proposed is in your packet. You'll note that the calendar increases the number of half-days from three days that we have in the current calendar to five days for next year. Per the AIA contract, we will continue with the four-fold professional development days. And this version before you has been reviewed, revised, and supported by members of the leadership team, as well as leadership from the AIA. We've really tried to construct a positive relationship with them, so to let them have a bit of input on that. So, you'll see that we've returned in this calendar to two full professional development days at the very start of the year, August 28th and 29th, as has been past practice and is in most of the contracts. We do not have school on the Friday before Labor Day, so that stays. We built a half-day in October that's attached to the Columbus Day weekend, so it gives families a little bit of a longer weekend. In November, November 9th would be our Parent-Teacher Conference Days. We attached a half-day to what the Friday is when we celebrate Veterans Day, so again, giving families an extended block of time off. As we move into December, I kept, we kept the 22nd as a half-day. And then, Professional Development Day, again, in January on the 2nd, when we return. We did that, after we did it, this year was the first year we did that in January. We surveyed staff with over 80% very much in favor. They really liked coming back to a Professional Development Day. I then sent out just a one-question survey to families in one of my weekly notices to see if they were in favor. And a little bit over 70% were also very much in favor of that, with about 30% not in favor. Some issues around childcare and such. It's just, we have to put the date someplace, so it's complicated when it comes to that. We kept a half-day on, put a half-day on January 12th, again, attached to Martin Luther King Weekend for Professional Development. February stays untouched. March, much like we do this year, halfway between February and April vacation, we did a half-day attached to a full Professional Development Day. Again, it gives families a longer weekend and gives a little bit of a more extended professional development block for us. The day in May, May 10th, that's a day when elementaries and even some, like, between middle school and high school, they start to talk about kids that are gonna be transitioning and setting up class lists for the next year. So, I couldn't move it much later. Initially, it was attached to that Memorial Day weekend, but that's getting too close to the end of school for us to be ready with class lists to be able to share by the end of the year. So, we had to keep that one, but I put it on a Friday instead of a Wednesday. We used to have all of those half-days on Wednesdays, and people didn't really like it right in the middle of the week. So, that would give us the last day of school of June 13th. You'll see the holiday in there for Juneteenth on the 19th of June, and that's dependent upon whether or not we're still in session. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of that?
I have a, well, one big question through the chair. I'm a little concerned about increasing our half-days. I remember back when my kids started, we had a half-day every single month, and we're getting close to that again. And as working parents, it's really, really challenging on those half-days for parents to be able to get their younger kids, as well as, I'm just wondering about, like, attendance. I know there are some families who are like, "It's a half-day. We're not sending our kids, because we can't pick them up and go home." So, I'm personally just concerned about increasing our half-days. I know that, you know, staff development is important and all of that. I'm just, I remember, we had a lot a while ago. I just don't want to get back there.
Can you just explain how it benefits, like, a half-day benefits the staff and...
Yeah. So, we are very hard, we're hard-pressed this year with only three half-days to have any flexibility in what we want to do when things, when, when we need to, we want to have data meetings, like longstanding data meetings where they're really digging into some data. Or, for instance, at the middle school, he has school improvement committees that meet at a faculty meeting, but as you all know, an hour faculty meeting is short time to dig into some of those things. So, for them to take a good half-day to have those groups meet and make recommendations for change. At the high school, there are times, again, for looking at student data, for when MCAS results come out, for making sure we have the time to do that. Because the longer full-days tend to be newer initiatives, like universal design for learning and those things that are truly what you would categorize as professional development. But the work of talking about students, of addressing building-based issues, of having the time to collaborate to do that, we run short on our faculty meetings. Faculty meetings in this recent contract went from 26 down to 21. Some of those are dedicated already to certain things, so those, that time is limited. And it really makes it difficult to get any initiative moving forward in a, in a, in a, in a way that makes sense. And I remember the year, we had one every month. And I would not recommend going back to that, but three were very, it really limited what we were able to get done this year.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what other districts do. Do we, do they have as many as five half-days per, per calendar year?
Yeah, so I, go ahead.
Through the chair, I can report on where I work. Through the chair, I can report on where I work, but we only have half day P D days. Which I will be honest, is fast, like it's all, it's quick. We don't have any full P D days unless it's the beginning of the school year. So they have them built in every month.
But you don't have the full P D days.
No, but we have like a half day built in every month and, and no full P D days. So it looks like that's a about the same amount.
Yeah, I just worry about.
Yeah, it is hard. We do have, during half day P Ds, we do have a much smaller amount of students there.
Do we run our after school programs on half days?
We don't because, we used to, but right now, we have so many um teachers. That are working the after school program, we didn't have staff. Um, because they couldn't do both. And so that became really, really tricky, um, like really tricky. Because oftentimes on those half days, we'd have more kids than we might normally have, people who want their kids to come and. I know there's a, there's a balance there, um, but I know that. That that our staff need time and and I've tried to. So the other thing is when we used to have those half days every month, they were on Wednesdays, which was kind of like a middle of the week kinda thing. I I would hope that maybe this makes this a little bit more convenient towards the end of the week rather than smack dab in the middle of a week. Um, I don't know that there are any. If you, I did look at lots of calendars in the area when I was doing this one. Oh, the other thing that I didn't point out is that in November, um, on the Thanksgiving weekend, this was something I s-. I saw from several calendars I was looking at in the area, that many don't have a half day on that Wednesday, they have a full day. So we built in a full day on that, so that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, instead of the half day that we had on um, on Wednesday. To make it more convenient for any families that may be traveling.
Well, the other thing is with half days, they count for the state as a day of school. And if we made them all full days or something, then the kids would be going into probably July first.
Full days, I'm just saying, do we need them all? Just because of.
Childcare.
Yeah, the difficulty and on families, plus I will, I personally love that they're connected to holidays and things like that. And I've never had to really think about it, but I heard some feedback about not being able to take time off the day before a holiday. With certain jobs. Or day after, is it? So. Can a parent leave on a half day the day before a holiday? Or even on a Friday, some places don't let you.
Is it like unreasonable to s- look into possibly bringing back the after school program? And maybe not use as much staff and maybe hire people to run it? Is that possible? Like, would that be, could we make that work in the budget or?
That's a, that's a big question. I don't have an answer for that question. I have no idea what that would cost and how. So you're saying just for those half days?
Yeah.
Who's high school students?
Yeah, but we can't, we can't. The responsibility of that is, the risk associated with that is tremendous.
I mean, like what we pull, I mean, our preschool teachers are probably also doing P D, but I was thinking.
No, cause they're they're part of the A A contract, so they're in the professional development as well, yeah.
And you can't have just anyone off the street. Who's gonna apply for a job that only is gonna be four times in a year or?
Yeah, that's too bad, yeah.
I will tell you that I added up the days, I looked at my calendar and I added up Auburn, they're both six and a half days over the course of the whole year. P D, so Auburn has one, two, three, four full days and one, two, three, four half days, which works out to be six and a half. So it is conducive, it is similar across districts.
I just like to look at other districts personally, could, just cause I remember how big of an issue it was.
Yeah, and I think you're gonna see that it varies wildly. So you're gonna, there were plenty that I came across that have one, they have full days, plus they have a a half day every month. Then you're gonna see some that have fewer than that. I I think it's, I I think it's, I think every place with what they need. And how they use them is going to be different. I just know that three days this year was really tight. When we're trying to get like our U D L coaches up to be able to work with our, with their colleagues, right? Because now they've gotten some coaches training and can they work with their colleagues? Well, an hour at a faculty meeting just isn't, you you can do some things, right? I'm not saying we don't use those and we do use them. Um, but particularly student placement, parent teacher conferences. The day in March is going to be another A D L and U D L, right? So Anti-Defamation League and Universal Design for Learning. In October, what we find is that that's a really good time to kinda have a check in. The year has started, what's going on, what do we need to fix, what needs to happen? As well as begin to look at some of the student data, because by then we've done some of our of our initial testing, particularly at the elementary schools. Um, so I mean, I guess, I I I don't think three is enough. If you think five is too many, I I suppose we could try and make four work, but I I just don't think three was enough this year. I really don't.
Did we increase from two to three this year? I feel like we added one.
We got rid of all of them, I feel like.
And that was, I will tell you, it was awful for us.
And that was a lot of parents pushing us.
It was really hard to get anything.
Doesn't work, so we have to bring some back. Through the chair, I think the reality is, is that there's only so many hours in a day. And we need to do these things and, you know, we're not gonna make every single person happy, unfortunately. I would love to, it'd be great. But I think doing it, setting it up this way, the best way that we, that can be done. But between holidays and Fridays, I think, I mean, we're trying to make it the best we can for everyone.
Maybe meet in the middle at four.
One thing, um, I'm thinking on a Friday. If a child has to go to grandparents, at least they don't have to come right back to go to school the next morning. So that might help having it right before a holiday. That might make it a little bit better.
Through the chair, I only wanna express two concerns. One is that January first day. I I did get a lot of parent complaints, but I'm just putting it out there. Um, and then the two days before the start of school, I just wanna make sure like teachers have a chance to be in their classroom for some of that. They're not spending two whole days like in full P D. Cause I know the two days before school, like, teachers need that time. So if we could figure out a way to give teachers even a half day in their classrooms, working on setting up, it gives them a chance. Like, I just wanna make sure we build that in.
And we will give, we will give consideration to that as we did last year, which again, really pressed us for time. With the one year at the start.
Yeah, one day last year.
There's just never enough time.
I just wanna make sure the teachers feel like they're getting now two days of P D, but that's, that's two last days like prior. I know like I'm in my classroom in July, you know, but if I had two days before the start of school and they said, we're gonna give you three hours, like. That would be more than, like, that would be very helpful. I just wanna make sure the teachers are, have some time too.
Fill in some. I can't commit to three hours. They will definitely have. They will definitely have time.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on this or are we feeling like we should wait, look it over? I don't know, Meg, if you wanna do research of other towns or?
I do, but you know, if you guys wanna vote, I'm just one vote.
I mean, does it, through the chair, does it make a difference if we vote now or in two weeks? I'm happy to help you research if you want.
Okay.
Um, Beth, what, how's that work for you? I know we wanna get it out as soon as possible, especially with half days.
Yeah, we we do it because people are gonna be asking and and I, I I guess, I appreciate, you know, the wanting to do research. I'm I'm, I I'm going to tell you, you're going to see a variety of things. I I respect that completely. I will say that this is what. Myself, the leadership team and A A has looked, looked at as far as um. What we feel is helpful to us, but you know, a- again, I I would not recommend going back to three for what we need for time. Um, if we had to compromise on four, then then that's your wish and we will make it work. Um, so yeah, so we can wait two more weeks. Usually, we're doing this before February, so that families can. Because they're already gonna be looking on a planning for the following year. So that would be my one thing, that we not put it off too, too long.
Okay, so you feel comfortable voting tonight?
Oh, we're waiting.
I'd like to wait, okay.
We need to make a motion to table?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table the approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four Auburn Public Schools. School year calendar as presented until next school committee meeting.
No second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll wait one more meeting for that one.
Can I just ask a question? Um, is it the intent that you would come with an entirely new?
Oh, no.
Calendar?
No, I would say, you know.
Cause I, then that requires another whole process for all of us.
No, 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 I I I would be more, I I can see myself being okay with four. And I ideally just don't wanna jump to five. I don't wanna go from three to five in a year, um, but no, no.
Chair, I was just wondering, is there a day that if we were to agree on four or you were tonight to agree on four? Is there a day that could be taken away and we could make it four at this point or do you still wanna? You know, I don't know if there's a day that needs to happen that would be better to take away than the half day.
Well, I'll have to figure that out if that's the way we go, but we'll let, we'll let. Take a look at that first and then decide from there.
But no, it's more the number for me, I, however you wanna run it, it's fine.
Want to talk to the A D A again too about the day or?
Well, I, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I I don't think, I I don't think. I I mean, that's. I don't think we're gonna have to go that route again unless, that's why I asked. Because if we're looking at a sweeping change, then that opens it up to the leadership team and to everybody. But if it's a a minor tweak on a half day, that's a different conversation and I think we could make that, make that work.
We already have a thumbs up, so.
I mean, I was gonna have you work on Christmas.
I'll work on Christmas. Well, I mean, I don't wanna speak for Meg, but my my assumption was is like to get rid of one of the half days, that's what you were thinking, okay.
A full day of school.
Full day of school. I was like, wait a second, I'm confused now.
No, not a full P D.
Every year, this is the hottest, the hot button issue, this, yes, the topic. Um, alright, so we'll wait till next meeting to do that vote and. Can mull it over and. Alright, ready to move on?
I am. Do we get a vote on it?
Yes, we're gonna take it till next meeting. Um, alright, let's move on to approval of school choice for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year.
Per, per Massachusetts general law, we are required to just vote on the continuance of school choice in the district. It's been an important aspect of our budget for the last decade and we welcome many wonderful students to the district. Uh, the number of students to be accepted into the district will be determined as we get closer after the March and we get our applications in and all of that. So this is strictly just to say that we wanna continue school choice and I actually think in the motion, we should add twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. For Auburn Middle School and High School. We should have those specifics in there because that's, we we don't. Unless there's a different will of the committee, but to stay just with the middle school and high school.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so this is just saying whether or not we wanna continue to have that in our district, we're required to take that vote.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'm totally fine with it. I think we've gained a lot of awesome students through our program, so. Um, alright, I'll seek a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to continue the school choice program for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. In Auburn Public Schools, at Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School, with the actual number of open school choice slots to be determined in March. After reviewing demographic data more closely.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and moving on to the Hanover Theater Grant.
Thank you. In your packet, you'll find a letter from the Arthur M. and Martha R. Pappas Foundation. I'm pleased to report that they've once again funded a three year grant initiative that allows for every student in the Auburn Public Schools to attend a yearly performance at the Hanover Theater. Uh, this, this uh same initiative was taking place probably four years ago now when it was first approved. Um, and then COVID hit, so several uh groups went the first year, um, but now this has been formally approved again. Uh, the Auburn Mass P T O has funded the transportation for these events in the past. They have money for that for this year. Uh, middle school already went to see a Christmas carol and there are some taking place in the spring. Uh, Magic School Bus, I think, one of the schools are going to. So again, they have that, some money put aside this year. I have a meeting with them uh later this week. To discuss what this might look like for the next three years. So I suspect that they may be, um, we may be looking for other fundraising options to to fund the transportation. Um, for the next few years, but they've been really great in supporting that, so we'll see what they have to say. But that was the kind of the, the key to this, that the foundation will fund the ticket, but we had to provide the transportation. So it's been a great experience. Those kids that have gone in the past have just absolutely loved it, absolutely loved it. And you know what, it's, it's performances that are meant to teach as well, they're designed to do that. Uh, not that all performances don't teach you something, cause I think they do, but it's just a great initiative. So I hope that um the committee will support our participation in this.
Middle school went this past Christmas to see the Christmas carol with all her girlfriends and it was like, I can't duplicate that. So that was just awesome to have that. Yeah, they all dressed up, it was very special and it was great, so thank you to the Papas's for that, so generous. Um, alright, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to support the participation of Auburn Public Schools and the grant funded by the Arthur M. and Martha R. Pappas Foundation. At the Hanover Theater and we'll start.
Second, any more discussion or comments?
I'll just say, we used to go to before this foundation and our students loved it and we loved taking them. And presenting them to theater and this is how you behave in a theater and you can't put your feet up on the chair in front of you. And all the little niceties and things and.
Yeah, that was always great.
Yeah.
And it's so, the theater itself is just so beautiful, right? It's like, it's, it's just a once in a, it's just a great experience, it really is.
It is, and a lot of kids don't have the accessibility to be able to do that, so.
Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Alright, and thank you to the Papas's, awesome. Alright, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. How much is the transportation? Do you know offhand or?
Yeah, well, it varies by, I don't know what we pay per bus on those trips.
I'm not off, I really don't know off the.
Just curious.
For some reason, yeah.
Last year, a field trip for us was like six hundred a bus.
I was gonna say between five and seven hundred is what it roughly takes and the number of kids you have and the number of buses you need.
So each bus fits like maybe forty-five middle schoolers, so.
Um, yeah, maybe about fifty, well, for ours, maybe fifty-two.
Just curious.
Yeah, so at least four buses probably.
Yeah.
I have to say through the chair, when I'm at work, I love seeing all the yellow buses, they line around the Hanover. So cute.
Alright, we'll move on to the school committee policy subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, um, as you know, at our, through our last agenda, you went through three readings of some policy updates. Um, but as uh we look at the school committee policies in the book that we have. It's clear that we need kind of a focus group of folks to take a good look at all the policies that are in there. Make sure that everything in there is appropriate and up to date. Anything that isn't up to date. Um, needs to be, uh, as well as to look at it through the lens of, do we have anything that's missing a policy, right? Things have changed a lot. And so I'm proposing um that there be two school committee members and myself on a subcommittee. Um, that would meet monthly for two hours to review all of the policies that are in our current policy book. And make recommendations to the larger committee for um updates and changes. Um, we can be flexible on the hours, some of that doesn't even have to be together if people take a stack and take a good look through it and flag things. But I just think it would, it would uh expedite a process that could take just myself or one person. A bit to go through and really look at it holistically, like are there things where we're missing? Because times have changed, you know, we have a social media policy that's fairly new, but is there anything else that could be looked at? Um, M A S C has a wealth of policies that you can go and look at, along with the listing of, I don't know how many districts' policy books. That you can always go to to reference to say, does any, you know, is there a policy on this or that? And it's just, I think we could come up with a really good product in fairly short time if we, if a few of us work together.
So I will say, I sent a picture to Beth, actually, my Saturday night. For nine years, I've been collecting policies from every meeting, so I had her stacked, it's big. Yes, and I went through and weeded them. For the entire night, even had my daughter helping me, like, put them in categories and whatever. So um I would like to be on this committee, cause I feel like I've already sacrificed.
Very exciting.
Yeah, I know, riveting, but um there, yeah, there's a lot, there's some work to be done there. So I've already witnessed it firsthand and I was like, well, this is garbage, you know, this is trash, we don't do this anymore.
Join you, Jessie, unless someone wants it.
It's, it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be fun.
There you go, Saturday nights, what a way to spend it.
Alright, so is everyone okay with myself and Meg on that? Uh, but alright, so when someone makes the motion, can you just add in our names? So we have it for the record, so.
I'll make a motion to create a School Committee Policy Subcommittee comprised of Jessie Harrington and Megan McCrillis. AKA School Committee Members and the Superintendent for the purpose of reviewing all current policies and making recommendations for revisions and updates to the full committee.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor? Okay, let the fun begin.
The excitement on your face.
It's ridiculous. I was so excited when I finished though, I was like. There were a lot of duplicates, I will say, so that's good. That shows that superintendents of the past have been keeping up on the policies. That's good. Um, alright, so now we know what I do on Saturday nights.
The Director of Food Services retirement.
Yeah, so I am sad to say, but happy for her, that Janice King, who has served as the Director of Food Services for the past ten years. Will be retiring at the end of March twenty twenty-three. This is something that's been in her planning for a bit. She's been thinking about it. I wanna thank Mrs. King for her dedication and professionalism that she's brought to this position and all the support she's given to our students and staff over the years. Um, we have already posted this, uh, position internally on School Spring and on Indeed. Uh, pulling together a team, we'll start interviewing as soon as possible. We'd like to be able to have this person do some overlap time with her, obviously. Um, but yeah, she's done a lot of great work for us, so we are sad to see her go, but happy for her. She's, she's ready.
She's been amazing.
Yeah, she's been great.
Huge asset to Auburn. So thank you to Mrs. King for her work and, um, yeah, we look forward to, to the future. We have great candidates right in-house, hopefully would work out, so.
That's right.
Um, alright, and that's not a vote, so we'll move on to, uh, the A B C Annual Report.
Uh, in your packet, uh, as required, I am sharing with you the annual report from the Esbit Valley Collaborative for your review. This was approved at the Board of Directors Meeting on December sixteenth, so this is informational, happens every year. You can look through it if down the road you have any questions. Um, but it's, you know, the Board of Directors is a group of sitting superintendents who we send kids to this, uh, organization, so. Do we have many students there now? We do, we do. I'm not gonna give you a number because there are a variety of places, but I would bet a handful at A B C. Um, and probably more, you, the next, uh, report is from the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. Includes Grow, um, so probably more of our students there. You know, they're closest to us. Transportation is, is good and they're a great organization. What about transportation to and from? Yep, yep, we provide it, yep. Um, so again, yes, the SWC Annual, uh, S W C E C Annual Report is also there for your review as required, uh, to be shared with you. So just again, informational.
I could read through those reports, um, not on Saturday night. It does look like they have a great program and they help our district as well. Something about like they send equipment and they're to our.
And sometimes training, they pro, they'll provide like very specified training or, um, consultant services on particularly, um, complex kids. That might have complex needs, they can do that as well, so. Um, yeah, no, they're a great resource, um, and honestly, we couldn't do without them.
We've been lucky to have them all these years. They were around even when it was, way back when, yeah.
Uh, Arnold Bundwall is the director now and he's just, he's doing a remarkable job, really just smart guy and. Um, providing very high quality services to some of our kids.
Great, that's good news. Alright, alright, we'll move on to donations.
Alright, so we're gonna lump all three together. Uh, the following donations. On behalf of our middle school, they're thanking the Browning family from Auburn Graphics for their generous donation. Uh, to be used for the eighth grade field trip to Philadelphia and New York City. The money will be deposited into the Student Activity Account. Um, and it'll be used as direct, as. As directed.
I think basically through the chair to be used like for students that might, to, to support other students that don't have the money to go.
There was no amount on there, I didn't notice that. Or in the letter. And then, uh, both Pakichag Elementary School and here at Central Office have benefited, uh, from a donation from Katrin Sanford from Fa- Fallon Health. Um, at Pakichag, they donated a conference table and chairs, as well as one for Mr. Keller's office, a, a good sized table and chairs. Um, so he can have PD in his office and it's boosted up, uh, Pakichag Elementary School as well. So we'd like to thank them for that donation also.
Very nice. Alright, can I get a motion to accept those donations?
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the generous monetary donation from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Browning. For the Student Activity Account to benefit the eighth grade field trip to Philadelphia, New York City, as well as the Conference Table and Chairs donation to Pakichag Elementary. And Central Office from Fallon Health.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? It's wonderful. Thank you to those people. Alright, Mr. Keller, it's your turn.
So just kinda transitioning off of the, the donation, I had, uh, professional development session, as I mentioned to you, I think a couple of meetings ago. Um, we're looking at, uh, bringing on an update to our Wonders Elementary Reading Program, so, um, I think it was Wednesday of last week. Uh, we had teachers who are, um, piloting, uh, the, the new Wonders, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, in my office. So it was a lovely opportunity to break in the table and chairs, uh, which are in great condition and so I'm, I'm very appreciative and it was a great opportunity. And it's a great space to have the teachers in and, and, uh, working through that, understanding the differences between the, um, old, um, textbooks and the new ones. So, uh, so I wanna, um, piggyback off of that and just say thank you for, to Ms. Sanford and to Fallon for, for that. Which is not why, not the agenda item that I have on here. So, uh, it is professional development, however. So on January third, uh, we had a professional development session on, on, on Universal Design for Learning. Um, and I'm sure U D L has been explained to all of you, uh, previously and we heard, um, that Freya, uh, experienced it in, with, from her classroom teacher. But, uh, it's funny because Dr. Chamberlain and I were talking earlier today. Um, I'm somebody who actually likes to read, uh, and so whenever I'm looking to do something around the house, when I, when I search on the web, I'll get all kinds of videos. Uh, and I have to scour through it all to find where I just, cause I would just wanna be able to read kind of the step by step. And so Universal Design for Learning is really accommodating students' needs and helping empower them, uh, and giving them options. So those who like to read, those who like to watch a video, those who like to listen to something. And so, um, that's was the essence of, uh, this journey that we're on, uh, we're on in year two of this three-year professional development journey. Apparently it launched successfully without my presence, uh, last year, but. It's been enjoyable to be on this journey and it's not just about, uh, a three-year commitment and then we move on to something else. It's about changing the way, um, the classrooms look, also changing the way that we as administrators work too. And so in, in faculty meetings, you know, as administrators, those are our classrooms. And so how do we deliver materials to teachers and, you know, if they need to do something to prepare for a meeting? Uh, giving them options, whether it be reading it, something, viewing something, listening to something. And so really thinking about ways we can accommodate all learners and, you know, kind of the classic example. Um, a- around Universal Design for Learning is curb cutouts were, uh, instituted in, on, you know, on roadways and highways that were for wheelchairs. But we've realized benefits beyond just people in wheelchairs, so, you know, you had somebody walking, somebody with a, a stroller or what have you. And so Universal Design for Learning is like that. So we talked earlier about kids on I E Ps and five oh fours. Uh, but really Universal Design for Learning helps all of our students, uh, and there's benefits beyond those who, who need accommodation. So at any rate, um, we had trainers, uh, from outside the district working in all of our buildings on January third. Uh, and then we have coaches who are being trained, um, uh, who are on this journey with us. Ultimately, after the three-year commitment ends, that they're going to be working with the staff in each building and keep this work at the forefront. Um, so they looked at exemplar lessons that are designed with those U D L principles in mind. Um, and then, um, and then began developing and continue to develop lessons that have that U D L, um, concepts, uh, in place. And I don't know if you noticed earlier, but in Dr. Chamberlain's, um, mid-year goals, we did a survey with staff afterwards. Uh, after the one-three, uh, professional development and they were really, um, impressive, what teachers said to us. So it, um, forty percent of staff, uh, when surveyed, said that there would be an immediate and positive impact on their practice as a result of January third. And for, you know, to say that, um, I, there's an immediate impact, uh, for, to hear that from forty percent of people, that's, that's a, was a really impressive number. We were happy to see that. And seventy percent of people talked about the January third, um, increasing their knowledge base. So, uh, we felt as though it was a really, um, successful day and we're continuing the work on U D L.
Great. Alright, any questions, comments from anyone?
Sounds good. Through the chair, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think that it's really commendable, cause U D L is, uh, it is quite a lesson plan. Um, so I think it's really commendable that the teachers are really, and they are, they're most definitely working hard on these U D L lessons and trying to come up with. A lot of great opportunities for the students. So it is, it is quite a lesson plan, like one U D L lesson is multiple pages long. Um, but it is great because it allows for all students to kind of pick and choose and feel like they're making a decision in their own education. So it's a great program.
Alright, great. Thank you for that report. Alright, we'll move on to Business and Financial Report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, in your packet, you'll find I provided a year-to-date budget report dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three for your review. Along with that, I've been, I've included a listing of budget transfers between the same series for your information. And, and between different series from which I'm seeking your approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on those.
Okay, everyone, questions or comments? Alright, seek a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three, as presented by the business manager.
All those in favor?
And that's my report.
Alright, short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Alright, do we have executive session?
We do not.
Alright, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Alright, good night, everyone.